Hello, hello, everybody. Thank you again for your patience with the appearance forms. It is a new rule that we have to have everybody sign it. We'll be starting shortly. If you can turn your cell phones off and again, no food, no water, no bags.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the June 21, 2024, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Brian Sanchez and I am the chairman of the ZBA. With me today are Commissioners Angela Brooks to my right, Zurich Esposito to my left, and farther to my left, our newest Commissioner Adrian Soto. Welcome Adrian, it's a pleasure to have you. All right, I'd like to make an announcement as part of Mayor Brandon Johnson's Cut the Tape Initiative. We are excited to share the Zoning Board of Appeals' more streamlined application and hearing process. The proposed rules and forms are available for view and public comment at chicago.gov/zba. Public comment will last until July 19. Now, I'd like to call this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. First, I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioner Brooks.
Present.
Commissioner Esposito.
Present.
Commissioner Soto.
Here.
I am present, quorum is established. The minutes of June's meeting, I'm sorry, of of May's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the minutes are approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the agenda is approved. Now, we will take continuances and withdrawals. If you have a continuance or a withdrawal, please step forward now.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Kopeck. Regarding two cases, case number 222-24S and 2322324Z. Alderman Irvin requested that we have a continuance on this matter. Possible to the earliest date would be great.
Okay. This is calendar numbers 22224S and 22324Z will be continued to July 19, the 2:00 PM call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Morning.
Good morning. Jordan Matches on behalf of 237-24Z. My client is a doctor, is not able to be here today. We'd ask for a one-month continuance.
Correct.
This for 3119 West Moffett.
Alright, so, these are all of the, you said 237, but I've got it through 240, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so calendar numbers 23724Z, 23824Z, 23924Z, and 24024Z will be continued to July 19, the 2:00 PM call, and no further notice will be given. Any other continuances or withdrawals? Right, not seeing any, we will call our first case. Victor?
First case, 22124S, 5141 South, let's roll.
Thank you.
Okay, before we get to the applicant, we will have the Department of Planning and Development read the department's recommendation. Right, so isn't, yeah. So, who's, is it gonna be Nancy or is it gonna be Joe? Okay.
This is for calendar number 221.
First, first, could you state your name and role, please?
Of course. Nancy Resovich, Assistant Commissioner with the Department of Planning and Development, Bureau of Zoning.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, this is the recommendation for calendar number 22124S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed nail salon. The department finds that the proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the nail salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed nail salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the applicant, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Could you state your name and address?
KCal Fam, 8017 Newcastle Avenue, Burbank, Illinois, 60459.
Okay, if you could just speak up so we'd make sure the court reporter gets it into that microphone right there. Okay, thank you. Alright, so you're here to open up a nail salon?
Yes.
Can you tell us about your experience in the nail salon business?
Yeah, I've been 15-year experience and I want to open another location at 554-5441 South Ciro Avenue. So, that's, I'm trying to apply, so I'm here today, sorry.
So, you said another location. Do you have other locations?
Yes.
Are they currently operating?
Yes.
So, this is just an addition to your business?
Yes.
Are you a licensed nail tech?
Yes.
Okay, and how long have you been licensed?
Around 10 years.
And are you planning on having employees at this business?
Yes.
How many?
Around, I don't know, yeah, but around six to eight.
Okay.
Yes.
And all of those employees, to the extent that they're nail techs, they'll be properly licensed?
Yes.
And what are the hours that you intend on keeping?
From 10 to 7:30.
Is that seven days a week?
We try to be seven day a week, yeah.
Okay, any questions from the board? Seeing none, we will take this under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next three cases, 22424Z, 22524Z, 22624Z, 247 West Shakespeare.
I get a jumping double high five.
Alright, well, yeah, we'll see. I'm gonna start the timer first. Alright, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Counselor Barnes, you can proceed with the short form.
Okay, this doesn't count for my one minute though, because I do wanna welcome Commissioner Soto. You have no idea how happy we are to see you. So, welcome to the fun. Good morning, for the record. My name is Sarah Barnes and I'm an attorney with the Office of Gozdeki Del Gideche. I'm happy to be here today on behalf of the applicants, Aaron Rubens and Megan Christensen. We also have with us here today our project architect Charlie Vins. We're here today to seek certain variations that will allow for renovations and improvements to the existing two-and-a-half-story frame residential building that you see before you. The existing building currently is non-conforming under the current zoning ordinance. We're dealing not only with practical, functional, and topographic hardships in that the building's non-conforming, the units within the building are very small, and then the topographic conditions of being on a substandard lot. So, it made making improvements and preserving the existing building very difficult, to say the least, and impossible to do without seeking variations from this board, which is why we are here today. So, with that, I will just go ahead and get the witnesses on. Everything else should be in the findings of fact.
That's correct.
Thank you. I'm actually gonna start with Aaron and Megan. Aaron, if you could just briefly state your name for the record.
Aaron Rubens.
And your address as well, excuse me.
2247, oh, sorry, 2247 West Shakespeare.
And you own the current property with your wife Megan, is that correct?
Yes.
And there's two units in the building, one in which you reside, and then you rent out the lower unit, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's your intentions for the long term? You don't intend to flip or sell the property once the improvements are made, if the variations are approved?
No.
Yeah, no, no.
You're not gonna sell the property.
We're gonna die in this property.
So, you're gonna raise a family there.
Well, that first.
That sounds good. That sounds better, the way you put it.
And continue to rent out the lower unit. That was really important to you, was maintaining affordable housing for people in the neighborhood, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Megan, if you can just briefly go on the record as well, because I know it's been a long time waiting for you guys.
Megan Christensen, 2247 West Shakespeare Avenue.
Thank you. And Megan, everything that Aaron just said, would you agree with those statements?
Yes.
And you are, you two intend to start a family and we continue residing at the property, is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you. And towards those ends, both Aaron and Megan, prior to the proceedings, we submitted findings of fact as well as an affidavit on behalf of Aaron. If you guys were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in those documents?
Yes.
And Aaron?
Yes.
Thank you. Charlie, real quickly, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Charlie Vins, 2567 East 71st Street.
And Mr. Vins, you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, is that correct?
That's true.
And you were responsible for designing the program for the improvements to the non-conforming buildings, is that correct?
That's correct.
And is it true, given all of the multitude of hardships that you had to work around, that we would not be able to make improvements to this building without seeking at least one variation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Vins, you as well, signed an affidavit prior to these proceedings, which were submitted with the findings of fact. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements made in those documents?
Yes.
And do you believe that the programming complies with all of the standards and criteria for variation as set forth in the current zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, we will take this under advisement. I don't know if it was a minute, so I don't, the double high five, but maybe a single high five, maybe.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Next case, 22724Z, 917 West Castlewood Terrace.
Alright, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Chairman Sanchez and Commissioners of the Zoning Board of Appeals. For the record, my name is Aaron Dorsey of the law firm of Dyke Magassid, and we represent the applicant, the amended and restated Daniel Kane Trust. I'm joined here today by Dan Kane, the trustee of the applicant entity, and Bob Jadoss, the president of International Design Associates, the project architect. The subject property is an existing two-story brick house built in the late 19th century, located 917 West Castlewood Terrace. The property also has an attached garage and rear deck which have been in existence for over 40 years. We are here today to request a variation in the rear yard and side yard setbacks in order to allow for structural repairs to the existing rear deck. The applicant is engaged with this neighbor's regarding the variation. We have also sent the required notice out to the surrounding property owners and have not received any opposition to this application. We've also received letters of support from an adjacent neighbor and from the president of the Castlewood Terrace, which I'm not sure if those made it to the end of the record, but I have those with me today. We have also briefed Alderwoman Clay about the application and have received a letter of support which should be on file. We respectfully ask for your favorable support and welcome any questions you may have.
Yes, please proceed. You can have them swear to their affidavits.
Okay. So, I will start with Dan Kane. Dan, you are the trustee of the applicant entity, is that correct?
Yes.
And I prepared an affidavit of testimony on behalf, is that correct?
Yes.
And you reviewed that testimony, is that correct?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be in substantial conformance with that testimony or that affidavit? Thank you. To Robert Jadoss. You are an Illinois licensed architect and president of International Design Associates, the project architect, is that correct? And I prepared an affidavit on your behalf, is that correct?
Yes.
And you have reviewed that affidavit? And if you were to testify, continue to testify today, would your testimony be in substantial conformance with that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair, that's all I have.
The footprint of the deck that's being repaired, is it staying the same? You're just doing structural repairs to the deck?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? We will take this under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Next case, 22824S, 3051 West Irving Park Road.
Sure, yeah, we will pass this case. Victor, let's call the next case and then, oh, okay.
23024S, 1460 West Fullerton.
Sure. Alright, while everyone is getting situated, I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 23024S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Kupiak. I'm the attorney for the applicant. On behalf of the applicant, I've got Silvio Mato seated beside me. And Silvio is the president of the applicant. And here for a special use for a hair salon. The applicant would tell you he's been advised, there was actually a hair salon at this location established more than 10 years ago. But through a quirk, when he went to renew a license, he found out that there had been a lapse in the licensing. As a result, he had to come back for a special use to reestablish it, similar use. Silvio, first witness, Silvio, state your name and your address into that microphone.
Silvio Mato, 1460 West Fullerton, Chicago.
So, that reminds me, let me swear you guys in. Yeah, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. And the board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise.
Thank you, thank you. And Silvio, you're the president of the applicant corporation?
Yes.
And you're here for a special use for a hair salon?
Yes.
And did I state correctly, you've been told that a hair salon was established in the same place, same spot, more than 10 years ago?
Correct. It's been a hair salon for about 14 years.
Good. But there had been a lapse in the license, so when you went to apply, you were told to get a special use?
Yes.
And you're here today?
Yes, sir.
And Silvio, did you sign this affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
Yes.
And if I were to continue questioning you, would your answers be consistent with this affidavit?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, state your name and address.
Joseph F. Ryan, MAI, President LaSalle Appraisal Group, with offices at 9455 South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And Joe, did you do a report in connection with your testimony here today?
I did.
And we submitted that report for you to the board. Joe, is it true that this special use complies with all the requirements of the ordinance?
It does.
Also true that this special use will not have an adverse effect on the neighborhood or the community?
No.
And if I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with your report?
It would.
Without more, that's all I have.
Any questions from the board? Alright, we'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, 23124S, 539 West 31st Street.
Alright, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand?
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, Jonathan's English is weak and Elba is here to translate.
Okay, great. Let me, let me swear on the translator first. Could you state your name and address, please?
Sure. It's, my name is Elba Toledo, 539 West 31st Street.
And the language you're gonna be interpreting, is it Spanish?
Correct.
Okay, and do you swear or affirm to accurately and truthfully translate Spanish to English and English to Spanish?
I do.
Thank you very much. Alright, now, please, would the witnesses plan to testify, raise your right hand?
Alza la mano derecha.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Puras decir la verdad.
Thank you very much. And the board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation. For calendar number 23124S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just a full disclosure, Elba, besides my translator, is also one of the co-owners of the subject property. And hair salon, Jonathan in his affidavit states he's licensed by the state, he plans to cut hair, plans to manage a shop. So, with that, Jonathan Morales, Jonathan, would you state your name and your address? Elba, would you translate each question?
Puedes decirnos tu nombre y tu dirección?
Ah, de donde vivo?
Donde vives?
Okay, mi nombre es Azazel Samayoah.
You gotta speak into that microphone because they're taking a tape.
Azazel Samayoah, vivo en 2742 Sur Polaski.
You gotta translate for the board.
Oh, that is right. His name, Azazel Samayoah, he lives on 2742 West Polaski in Chicago.
Yeah, Elba, you could take that microphone so you each have a microphone. And Jonathan, is it true you're licensed by the state to cut hair?
Estás licenciado, tienes licencia para cortar pelo?
Yes.
And you plan to not only cut hair, but also man And you plan to not only cut hair, but also manage this shop?
Planeas cortar el pelo más aparte de manejar el negocio?
Sí.
He does.
Good. And Jonathan, we sat in my office and we, with Elba's help, we prepared this affidavit that you signed, is that correct?
Ya, estuviste en mi oficina y con mi ayuda de traslación que te induce para ti, firmastes la declaración de jurado?
Sí.
Yes.
And is it true that if I continue to ask you questions, your answers would be consistent with this affidavit that you signed?
Sí, estás haciendo las mismas preguntas, van a ser consistentes con lo que tú le dijiste si jurastes en esa declaración?
Sí.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, Jonathan also met with the local alderman, Alderman Michelle Lee, and I think you've got a letter from her in the file. At least it was submitted. And if not, I've got a duplicate copy here.
I don't remember seeing it.
Joe Ryan, Joe, state your name and address.
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI, President LaSalle Appraisal Group, with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And you had prepared a written report in connection with this case?
I have.
And we had submitted that on your behalf?
Yes.
Joe, is it true that this special use meets all the requirements of the ordinance?
Yes, it does.
Also true, this special use would not have an adverse effect on the neighborhood or the community?
None whatsoever.
And if I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with the affidavit, strike that consistent with your report?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so I do have in my hand a letter from Alderman Lee, who states that she... Oh, okay, yeah, she's in support. Okay, yeah, I will add this to the file.
Good, thank you.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three cases, two thirty-two, twenty-four S, two thirty-three, twenty-four Z, two thirty-four,
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. I'll go ahead and read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation for calendar number two thirty-two, twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed new mini-mart building for an existing gas station, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Malum Inc., and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated June one, twenty-twenty-four, prepared by Nick Scarlatus and Associates, L T D. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Kupiak, I represent the applicant. And I have with me today, as part of the team, I've got Kadhar Sadagar, two seats down, who is the president of the applicant, that owns the subject property and operates, currently operates, the existing BP gas station. Right next to me is the son Mazen, who handles operations. Three seats down, Nick Scarlatus, who did the plans, and next to him, Joe Ryan. And just a brief history, this is an old gas station. And Kadhar would tell us how many years ago he bought it, but a long time. And actually, it was before this board before, back in two thousand and eleven, with the same proposal. He wants to modernize the station. Because it's an old station, it has an old kiosk, which is small, not convenient for the customers. Anyway, they were before the board back in two thousand and eleven, calendar number fifty-nine, eleven S. Special use was approved at that time, but for various reasons, the work was not done. Now they're ready to go ahead, but they're told, of course, because of the passage of time, we need a new special use, and we are here, went through the intake process, and we're seated here today. And Mazen would also tell you, he met with the local alderman, Gilbert Viegas, who also submitted a letter with respect to this case, that he has no objection.
Yeah, and I do have that in the file.
Good. I'm going to call Kadhar first. Kadhar, would you take that microphone, state your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Kadhar Sadagar, and at property number nine fifty-four Northwestern Avenue slash twenty-four oh five, West Augusta Boulevard, Chicago, Illinois.
Could you just slow down a little bit for our court reporter, please?
They're making a recording of this, so they'll be able to listen to it later.
My name is Kadhar Sadagar, property address nine fifty-four Northwestern Avenue slash twenty-four oh five, West Augusta Boulevard, Chicago, Illinois.
Good. And Kadhar, about how long ago did you buy this gas station?
About nineteen years ago.
Good.
Nineteen ninety-eight, yes.
And Kadhar, when you bought the gas station, the gas station property was the same size as far as the lot area, zoning lot, the same size as it is today, correct?
Yes, correct.
And we're looking to proceed with the same gas station on the same lot, same size?
Correct, correct.
Good. Kadhar, also true, we were before the board in two thousand and eleven on a special use?
Yes, we did.
And the plan we're bringing today is similar to the plan that was approved by the board at that time?
Yes, correct.
Good. That's all I have. Kadhar, Mazen, state your name and address?
My name is Mazen Sadagar, address is nine five four Western, also known as twenty-four oh five, West Augusta Boulevard, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six two two.
And Mr. Chairman, just procedurally, I should point out, we actually have three cases. The first case is a special use to add the mini-mart, even though very clearly, mini-marts are permitted use in a B-three district, but we need the special use to add it to the gas station, same relief we asked for last time. Number two, case number two, is because of the size of the lot, hence Kadhar's testimony. It's an old gas station that was established before the city had any minimum size for a gas station. So we're proceeding with the same lot, same gas station size. And now, with the special use, they're looking at the landscaping as part of the intake process. So because of the small size, we're not able to address the seven-foot landscape setback, okay? So we're asking for a variation on the setback, although, as you can see, to compensate, we're adding some extra square footage of interior landscaping to make up for it. So all this testimony applies to all three cases.
Of course.
Correct? You've got an existing BP gas station?
Yes, we do.
And BP wants you to modernize that gas station?
Yes, they do.
And your bank wants you to continue to have your agreement with BP to operate a BP station at this site?
Yes, that's correct.
So important to you that you modernize this station?
Correct.
The kiosk right now is old and small?
Yes.
And as a result, not convenient for the customers, especially in the wintertime?
Exactly.
But there's mini-mart station would be more convenient for the customers because they could come inside to pay their bill?
Yes.
All right. And with the addition of this mini-mart, you intend to operate pretty much as you have all these years?
Correct.
And Mazen, we had talked about this, and we had prepared an affidavit for you in connection with your testimony here today?
Yes.
And if I continue to quiz you, would your testimony be consistent with this affidavit?
Yes, it will be.
Is it also true that you had met with the local alderman, Gilbert Viegas, to explain this project?
Yes, I have.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I think he has submitted his letter of no objection.
And we have that in the file.
Good. I've got Nick Scarlatus here, in case there was any questions about the plans, but we've actually gone through the intake process, made several revisions of the plans, so I think those questions probably have been answered with the intake process and the letter of recommendation. But he is here if you had a question.
Now, does he have an affidavit?
Um...
Or no?
I'm not sure that we had submitted one for Nick.
Just to get it on the record, ask a few questions of him.
Good. Nick, with respect to the special use, we've got an existing gas station?
Yes.
We're going to demolish the kiosk? Demo, demolish the kiosk? Good. And add a mini-mart? A mini-mart convenience store?
I cannot hear very well, so...
Okay, okay. And Nick, you did the plans, designed the mini-mart?
Yes.
And those plans, this mini-mart building will be consistent and compatible with other buildings up and down the street?
Yes.
And we actually went through the entry process. Also, this mini-mart will be safe and convenient for pedestrians to walk up there?
Yes.
Good. And the size of this site is the same as it is now and it's been all these years?
Yes.
There's no change to the size of the site?
Well, the only thing we changed is that we eliminated two driveways, so there are some changes.
The size, the size of the site is the same.
It has not changed.
Also, Nick, because of the size of the site, there's no room to do the seven-foot landscape setback. There's no room to set back seven feet. We have existing gas pumps, right?
Yes.
But at the city's suggestion, we are adding some interior landscaping to make up for it?
Yes.
Is that true? Okay. And thank you, Nick. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe Ryan, state your name, your address?
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI, President LaSalle Appraisal Group, with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And Joe, you did a report in connection with this case?
I did.
And we had submitted that report on your behalf?
Yes.
Joe, is it true that this special use meets all the requirements of the ordinance?
It does.
And there is an existing BP gas station on the site, correct?
Correct.
Also true that this addition of the mini-mart will not have an adverse effect on the surrounding property or the neighborhood?
No, it won't.
And if I continue to quiz you, your answers would be consistent with your report, which we submitted?
Yes.
And you've got the alderman's letter, so I think that's all we have.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next two cases, two thirty-five, twenty-four S, and two thirty-six, twenty-four Z, twenty-five,
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number two thirty-five, twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed financial services facility bank with a drive-through ATM to serve a proposed Citibank, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Citibank, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the floor plan, demolition, exterior elevations, exterior elevations, site improvement plan, overall site plan dated June twelve, two thousand and twenty-four, prepared by Ware Malcolm and the landscape plan and landscape specifications dated May sixteen, two thousand and twenty-four, prepared by Metz and Company. The board recognizes Mr. Kirwin's expertise, and Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Turner, with offices in Elmhurst, Illinois. I represent the applicant Citibank, which is seeking a special use to establish a drive-through ATM to serve a proposed bank facility within an existing strip mall located at two zero six five East Ninety-Fifth Street, which is in a B-one-three neighborhood shopping district. The applicant will be leasing the subject property, which is approximately thirty-three, three thousand three hundred and thirty-six square feet in size, and is the end cap of an existing one-story commercial strip center. The center consists of twelve retail units with adjacent exterior parking. The applicant plans to make extensive interior renovations to the space with an estimated budget of approximately one point nine million dollars. There will be no exterior improvements to the premises, other than the subject drive-through on the east side of the building for the ATM. New landscaping will be added to enhance the existing landscaping. And to my right is Mark Schwamel from Ware Malcolm, the lead architect. To his right is Suzanne Morrison, our project engineer, and to her right is Bud Kirwin, our expert appraiser. So this same testimony will apply to both the special use and the variations. So I will proceed right now with Suzanne. So Suzanne, could you please state your name, occupation, and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Suzanne Morrison, and I am a construction project manager for Citibank. Our address is five hundred West Madison Street, second floor, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six six one.
And the project is, as you stated, for the new bank facility within the Ninety-Fifth and Jeffrey Shopping Center, which again is the eastern end cap and one of twelve units in the center, is that correct?
Yes.
The applicant seeks a special use to allow a drive-through ATM to serve the proposed bank facility, is that correct?
Correct.
The applicant is also seeking variations to the landscape ordinance to, number one, reduce the required interior landscape perimeter setback from seven feet to five point four feet, or approximately seventy-two linear feet. That was a mouthful. And then, secondly, to reduce the required interior landscape perimeter setback from seven feet to zero, or approximately twenty-five linear feet. So we've got a little haphazard thing going on there in the front of the center. Suzanne, the renovations to the premises will include interior demolition, new interior partitions, doors, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, equipment, ceiling, lighting, millwork, and the budget is approximately one point nine million, is that correct?
Correct.
There is a total of one hundred and eighteen onsite parking spaces for the center customers with convenient ingress and egress, is that correct?
Correct.
And this is all interior? This, the drive-through facility is all interior, doesn't spill out to Clyde, it doesn't spill out to Ninety-Fifth, it's all interior within the shopping center area?
Correct. It's contained within the frontage road that runs in front of the strip mall.
But that's a private road, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The hours of operation of the bank will be Monday through Friday, eight-thirty a.m. to five p.m., and Saturday, eight-thirty a.m. to one p.m., is that correct?
Yes.
Closed on Sunday?
Correct.
The applicant estimates that staff in the facility will be about five to seven new employees, is that correct?
That is correct.
And several revisions to the plans were made to accommodate and enhance pedestrian safety in and around the drive-through and the exterior parking areas, is that correct?
Yes.
We worked with the city to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And Suzanne, you signed an affidavit regarding the project and the proposed special use, which was submitted as part of the findings of fact, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify in this matter, it would be consistent with the facts set forth in your affidavit?
Yes.
I don't have any further questions for Suzanne at this time, and welcome questions by the board?
You can continue.
Okay. Now, I will call Bud Kirwin to Suzanne's right. And Bud, can you state your name, occupation, and address for the record, please?
Yes, Sylvester J. Kirwin, Jr., and President Owner of S.J. Kirwin Associates, Real Estate Appraisers and Consultants. My offices are located at seventy-seven sixty-five West North Avenue in River Forest, Illinois.
And Mr. Chairman, you already recognized Bud as...
We did.
Okay, thank you, sir. Bud, you visited the site and prepared a report regarding your opinions and conclusions for this special use, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And the special use complies with all the criteria for, required by the ordinance, is that correct?
That is also correct, yes.
And it is your opinion that the special use will not cause substantial injury to the character, welfare, or value of the property in the neighborhood, and is consistent with the stated purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, is that correct?
That's also correct, yes.
And you also signed an affidavit summarizing your opinions and conclusions, which was submitted as part of the findings of fact?
Yes.
And similarly, if you were to continue testifying in this matter, it would be consistent with the facts contained in your report and your affidavit?
Yes, that's also correct.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Kirwin at this time. I would welcome questions by the board.
Do you have any other, are you, is that your case? Are you done?
Well, I've got to elaborate on the variation.
Okay. Just, I think you can have them swear to their affidavits. You don't have any objectors here.
Okay. So no further questions for Bud? Any questions by the board?
No, you can continue. No, you can continue.
At this point, I'm going to switch gears and focus on the variation. And to my right is Mark Schwammel. Mark, would you please state your name and address and occupation for the record, please?
Mark Schwammel, FAIA. I am with Ware Malcolm Architects, 500 West Madison, Suite 1000, Chicago, Illinois, 6061. 60661.
And you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you are the lead architect for Citibank on this project?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that Mr. Schwammel be recognized as an expert?
We don't recognize architects for variations as experts. It's just the land appraisers.
Got it.
For special use.
Again, Mark, the applicant is seeking a variation to the landscape ordinance to, in two respects. Number one, to reduce the required interior landscape perimeter from seven to 5.4 feet for, again, approximately 72 linear feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then, secondly, to reduce the required interior landscape perimeter setback from seven feet to zero feet for approximately 25 linear feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
And strict compliance with the code in this case would require that this existing landscape perimeter to be demolished and rebuilt, creating a different landscape perimeter setback for one out of the 12 stores in the existing strip center. Is that correct?
Correct.
Creating kind of a haphazard appearance.
Correct.
Again, in this case, there's, there's one or 12 units in this existing center. Is that correct?
Correct.
The particular hardship in this case is clearly unique and not generally applicable to other similarly situated properties. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you have also submitted a report, I'm sorry, an affidavit in support of the findings of fact, setting forth your opinions and conclusions, correct?
Correct.
And that all, the, that this case complies with all the requirements for a variation required by the code. Is that correct?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, Mark, in this matter, it would be consistent with the opinions and conclusions set forth in your affidavit? Is that correct?
Correct.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Schwammel at this time?
Any questions from the board? Is that, you're resting right now, correct?
That is correct, sir.
We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning. Jordan Matches, Counsel. I am joined by Samantha Carter and Joe Ryan.
Okay. Would the witnesses please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 24124S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon and barber shop. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you so much. Ms. Carter, can you state your name and address?
My name is Samantha Carter, address 3021 North Milwaukee Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
And are you licensed by the state?
Yes.
And how many chairs will be located at this salon?
Two.
And are you by appointment only?
Yes.
And you submitted an affidavit. If I were to continue to ask questions, would you answer in compliance with that affidavit?
Yes.
Questions?
You can proceed to Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Ryan, as part of this, or can you state your name for the record?
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI, President, LaSalle Appraisal Group with offices at 9455 South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And, Mr. Ryan, as part of this project, you submitted a report. Would you testify today that the proposed special use complies with all standards of zoning?
Yes.
And if you were to further testify, you would testify significantly in compliance with your affidavit and your statement in your report?
Yes.
That's all we have.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor Moore, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you very much. My name for the record is Thomas S. Moore, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Soto to our third Friday of the month club here. Will you tell the board who you are?
Yes, I'm Kathleen Hockman. Kathleen Hockman. Live at 3537 North Greenview.
And who do you, who do you live there with?
My husband, Jason Hock. Go ahead.
My name's Jason Hockman. Katie's husband live at 3537 North Greenview.
With our three kids.
Okay. And you did not buy from the developer. You bought from someone who bought from the developer?
Correct.
And there was already a garage roof deck set up, but it hadn't been built out?
Correct. We just finished it up.
So you hired a contractor to do that, and one of the line items in it was for him to get permits and plans?
Correct.
And you paid for that?
We did, a lot.
And then, other ways, he disappointed you, and he walked off the job?
Correct. We're in dispute with that.
And so ultimately, then you hired your own architect, did your own plans, and will have a permit if, to do everything in compliance, if the board sees fit to grant these variances?
Correct. That is our plan.
And you have talked to your neighbors, and you have a series of emails where they have no objection?
Correct.
And as a matter of fact, you don't know anybody who has any objection?
Correct.
And this is just to create outdoor space for your children and your family events, et cetera?
Correct.
And you and I worked out an affidavit. If you continue to testify, you testify consistently with it. Is that right?
I would.
And you've told us who you are, sir. Anything you want to add to your wife's testimony?
No.
Okay. Smart man. Can you tell us who you are, sir?
Christopher Bremer. I am a licensed architect in Illinois. My office is located at 212 South Marion Street in Oak Park, Illinois.
And if the board sees fit to grant the variance, this project will be in full compliance. Is that right?
Correct.
And you and I worked out a witness statement where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
Yes.
That's our case in chief.
Okay. I have a question, and I like to ask this question anytime that there's a contractor that does something like what happened to you. What is the name of the contractor?
Baki. What's the full name? Pitch Concepts is the name of the company. His name himself is Baki.
Okay. Say, say the name of the company?
Pitch Concepts?
Page?
Pitch. P-I-T-C-H.
Okay. Pitch Concepts. And the name of the person you were dealing with?
Is, he goes by Baki. B-A-K-Y.
Okay. Do you know the last name?
Sumari.
Thank you.
Sumari. Baki Sumari from Pitch Concepts. Okay.
Love some help.
I feel like we just had one last month with Pitch Concepts, same thing.
Oh, me? I don't know.
No, I don't know if, no, I don't know if it was you, but I just, I remember this, that name, Pitch Concepts. So it seems like they're a repeat offender, and I'm sorry that that happened to you. Any questions from the board? We'll take this under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you. My name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
I'm Mark Crewach, one of the co-owners of 5418 South Blackstone Avenue with my wife, Tamara McDonough.
And it's a, it's all one building with a common wall of the two separate properties. Is that right?
Correct.
And it's a 19th century property?
Correct. 1887.
And it has some oddities that way, like sleeping rooms on stilts in the back and stuff?
Yes.
And you live there with your wife and your eighth grader and 10th grader?
Correct.
And you're a professor at University of Chicago?
I'm an English teacher at the University of Chicago's High School, the laboratory school.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And you hope to stay there for the foreseeable future?
Yeah, we, we've been there. This is our 15th year. It's the first place we've moved to in Chicago, and we'd like it to be the last place we live in Chicago and to stay in Chicago.
And you live on the north side of the two-unit building?
Correct.
And so you need a variance at, on the south wall?
Yes.
Because you're extending in the back?
Yes.
And, and that's reflective of the Warrens, who live on the other side. Is that right?
Yes.
And so you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
Yes, I would.
The lady to your right, will you tell us who you are? Tell the board who you are?
Oh, sure. Hi, I'm Tamara McDonough, Mark Crewach's wife.
And anything you'd like to add?
Nope. I think you covered everything.
Okay. The gentleman to your right, will you tell us who you are, sir?
Kenneth Warren. I'm at 5420 South Blackstone.
And your unit, your home, is the other side, the south side, and reflective of the McDonoughs, the Mark and Tamara's home. Is that right?
Yes, they're mirror images of each other.
And so you need a variance on the north side of, of your property?
Correct.
To modernize the property and to add bathrooms and, and make it more livable for your family?
Yes.
And you and I, you raised your four children in the area, and you also intend to live there for the foreseeable future?
Yes, that's correct.
And you also work at the University of Chicago?
I am a professor at the University of Chicago.
Thank you. And you and I worked out an affidavit where we addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. The lady to your right, will you tell us, the board, who you are?
I'm Maria Warren. I co-own the property at 5420 South Blackstone.
And is there anything you'd like to add to your husband's testimony?
We're just excited to proceed with our construction.
Great. Thank you very much. The gentleman to her right, will you tell us who you are? Tell the board who you are.
Hello, I'm Samuel Burke. I'm the project manager from Single Architects.
And you have designed, on both cases, you've designed the plans so that if the board were to grant this variance, it would comply with all of the ordinances and rules and regulations of the city of Chicago. Is that right?
That is correct.
And it'll fit right in to this 19th century building?
That's right.
And if you were, you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant these variances, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that. Is that right?
Yes.
That's our case.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, 24524Z, 6566 Northwest Highway.
Good morning. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor Fatikas, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, sir. For the record, again, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant JSJ Properties LLC. The applicant owns the subject property at 6566 North Northwest Highway. The subject site consists of a single zoning lot measuring 50 feet wide by only 106.37 feet deep, and it's improved with a three-story, six-unit residential building. And six off-street parking spaces are provided at the rear of the lot. The applicant is proposing to permit a seventh unit in the basement or garden level of the building. The issue is, although the density enassing of the building all comply with the underlying RM 4.5 zoning district, the substandard lot depth dimension prevents us from locating an additional off-street parking space on-site. So we're seeking a variation to waive that one parking space requirement. But again, to be clear, the footprint, size of the building, everything will remain the same, as will the six parking spaces at the rear. We have two witnesses on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Joe Swiatek, and our project engineer, Mr. Michael Cox. And with that, I can call my first witness.
Please do.
Joe, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Joseph Swiatek.
And Joe, you are the manager of the applicant, JSJ Properties LLC?
Yes, I am.
And again, that entity owns the subject property at 6566 North Northwest Highway. Is that right?
Yes.
And as I explained to the board, we're proposing to permit a seventh residential unit in the existing multi-unit building?
Yes.
And in order to do that, we're seeking a variation to reduce the off-street parking requirement for the new unit to be permitted?
Yes.
And you did provide the board with a summary of your projected costs and anticipated return?
Yes.
And all the seven units, assuming were approved, would be rented on the open market. Is that right?
Yes.
And Joe, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Mike, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Michael Cox, 120 West Madison.
And you are a licensed structural engineer in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
And your firm developed the plans for permitting the proposed garden-level unit. Is that right?
Correct.
And it's your professional opinion that the substandard 106.37-foot lot depth dimension is really what creates the practical difficulty or particular hardship the requested variation would overcome?
Yes.
I mean, otherwise, with an additional 18 feet of lot depth, we could have provided one, if not two, additional parking spaces.
Correct.
And is it your understanding, Mike, that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
If you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
It would.
Thank you. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And isn't it two?
It's two.
Correct.
Next two cases. 24624Z and 24724Z, 3737 West Eighteenth.
Altogether.
Yep.
Okay. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you again. For the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices, Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Israel of God Church White Horse Army and Illinois Non-for-Profit Corporation. The applicant owns the subject property at 3737 West Eighteenth Street. As you can see from the survey, it's a single zoning lot that's 75 feet wide by only 116.29 feet deep. The lot is currently improved with two buildings, a three-story religious assembly building at the front, and a two-story multi-unit residential building at the rear. The applicant is now proposing to construct a one-story addition on the south side of the existing three-story building. The addition would contain a kitchen and men's and women's restrooms. The size of the sanctuary prayer area and the rest of the three-story building will remain the same. In order to permit the addition so that it really aligns with the first floor, floor plate, the applicant is seeking a variation to reduce the front setback from 13.92 feet to 3.52 feet and increase the allowable floor area ratio for a non-residential use, again, specifically religious assembly, located in a residential district. The existing floor area total is 10,466 square feet. That's the technical maximum floor area allowance, and we're coming in at 11,713 square feet. With that, I have two witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Bishop Ronald Henton, and our project architect. and our project architect, Mr. Cyrus Revetna. With that, I can call my first witness.
Please do.
Bishop Henton, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Good morning. Bishop Ronald C. Henton, 3737 West Eighteenth Street, Chicago, Illinois.
And you are an officer of the applicant, the Israel of God Church White Horse Army and Illinois Non-for-Profit Organization?
Yes.
And again, that entity owns and occupies the subject property at 3737 West Eighteenth Street, is that right?
Yes.
And you currently operate and function a place of religious assembly and church at the property?
Yes.
And right now, or the reason we're before the board is to permit a one-story addition on the south side of the three-story building?
Yes.
And that one-story addition would contain a kitchen and men's and women's restrooms for your congregation members to use, is that right?
Yes.
But again, the capacity of the prayer hall and really the size of the three-story structure, all of that will remain the same?
Yes.
And it's your understanding, Bishop, that I did file witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would.
Thank you very much. Cyrus, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Cyrus Revetna, address is, business address is 1200 West Thirty-Fifth Street, Suite 3210.
And again, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
I am.
And your firm designed the building program or the addition program for the subject property, is that right?
We did.
And it's your professional opinion that the existing non-conforming building conditions and the substandard lot depth dimension of one hundred and sixteen feet taken together create the particular hardships or practical difficulties the requested variations would overcome, is that right?
That's correct.
And it's your opinion, even with the reduced front setback in particular, because it's actually inset from the existing building's front setback, it's not going to have any new or greater impact on the neighboring properties on Ridgeway, is that right?
Correct.
And Cyrus, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
You did.
And if you were to continue to testify, would you test, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
I would.
Thank you. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members might have.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Next six cases, 24824Z, 24924Z, 25024Z, 2117 North Dayton, and 25124Z, 25224Z, 25324Z, 2119 North Dayton.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
I do, I don't know if I'm actually...
All right, Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Chairman. For the record, Fred Augustine with the Law Office of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Christine Jodewyn, 2012 Family Trust. The applicant owns the properties located at 2117 to 19 North Dayton. Both properties are improved with row houses that were constructed around 1884. The applicant plans to keep these homes. These homes, however, are in poor condition. So the plan is to rehab them. He's also proposing to construct for both homes a partial third-floor addition, a rear two-story addition, and a new detached one-car garage with a rooftop deck. In order to do this work, we are seeking variations to reduce the combined side setbacks to zero for both properties, reduce the rear setback from thirty-five feet to twenty-four feet for both properties, relocate the rear yard open space of the required one hundred thirty-five point three six square feet to the proposed rooftop deck, again, these are for both properties. The only difference is for 2117 North Dayton, we are seeking a variation to increase the FAR by sixteen point three square feet. For 2119 North Dayton, we are seeking a variation to increase the FAR by twenty-one point eight square feet. Otherwise, the relief for both properties are the same. Here with me this morning, on behalf of the applicant, Jean Jodewyn, and our project architect, Michael Villamontes. Also up here is Jean's son, John Jodewyn as well. So, and Chairman, just real quick, hardship, both lots are narrow lots. They're only sixteen feet wide. And as I alluded to, we are keeping the existing row houses. And those row houses obviously presented some design challenges for us in terms of meeting the setbacks. So if I could call my first witness, Jean Jodewyn. Mr. Jodewyn, please state your name and address for the record.
Jean Jodewyn, 23335 North Chesapeake Drive, Lake Barrington, Illinois.
And you are the trustee for the applicant, is that correct?
Yes.
And the applicant owns both properties at 2117 to 19 North Dayton?
Yes.
And they are improved with two row houses that are around one hundred thirty-seven years of age, is that correct?
That's correct.
And your plan is to rehab the homes while also constructing a partial third-floor addition, two-story rear addition, and as well as a new one-car garage with a rooftop deck, is that correct?
Yes.
And in order to do that project, we are seeking variations to reduce the rear side set and side setbacks as well as relocating the rear yard open space as well as increasing the FAR, is that correct?
Yes.
You executed an affidavit which our office submitted to the board on your behalf, is that correct?
Yes.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with that affidavit, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. If I could call my second witness? Mr. Villamontes, please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Villamontes, M. Villamontes Architects, 53 West Jackson Boulevard, Suite 337.
And you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, is that right?
Yes, I am.
And you're familiar with the subject property, is that right?
Yes.
And the plan, just to summarize, is rehabbing the existing homes or also building a new partial third-floor addition, a new rear two-story addition, as well as a new one-car garage with a rooftop deck for both homes, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And in order to do that project, we are seeking variations to reduce the side and rear setbacks as well as relocating the rear yard open space and increasing the FAR, is that correct?
Yes.
You executed an affidavit which I submitted to the board on your behalf, isn't that right?
Yes.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with that affidavit, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions for my witnesses. I believe the alderman has submitted a letter of no objection to the project. We also presented this project to the neighborhood group, Sheffield Neighbors Association. I believe they submitted a letter.
Could you elaborate a little bit on the conversations you had with the neighbor to the north? I understand they had some objections.
Yeah. So, you know, I think his concern was privacy and sunlight. So privacy, you know, originally, we proposed a lot of windows and maybe I could have the architect elaborate on that. But Jean decided to get rid of some of the windows to appease him, so hence more privacy for him. And as, you know, the penthouse, the neighbor to the north has also a partial third-story penthouse. We're proposing that in our design. We would be six feet setback from that partial third floor, or third third-floor addition. And then we would be, our addition would also be setback three feet from our side property line. So there's a six-foot difference. And also, the height of our proposed third-story addition would be much, will be lower than our neighbor's property. So that's how we addressed it. I don't know if Mr. Villamontes wanted to elaborate.
We did the best we could to accommodate the neighbor. We're not really asking for anything variance-wise, really. The only thing we're really asking for is that sixteen square feet essentially on the third floor for the increased FAR. The setbacks are actually more than complying at three feet on that third-floor addition. The underlying setback would be two feet, so.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, 24524Z, 24924Z, 25024Z, 2117 North Dayton,
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor Augustine, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you again, Chairman. For the record, Fred Augustine with the Law Office of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Marsilia Belgrau. Marsilia and her husband own the property at 1908 North Francisco. Property is a double lot and is improved within an existing single-family home as well as a rear two-car garage. The applicant plans to keep the home, however, she would like to incorporate additional living space. She'd also like to reconstruct a new two-car garage. So in order to accomplish both, the applicant plans to demolish the existing garage and construct a new two-car garage on the first level while adding a coach house on the second level. And since this property is an ADU district, a coach house can be established. In order to construct this proposed garage and coach house, the applicant is seeking a variation to reduce the rear setback from the required thirty-five point oh eight feet to zero. Here with me this morning is the applicant, Marsilia Belgrau, as well as our project architect, Victor Dropso. And just, Mr. Chairman, briefly on the hardship, the lot is shorter than the standard-sized lot, that's one hundred twenty-five feet deep. In addition, we are keeping the existing home. Right now, the existing home is built on the north lot, while the south lot is improved with an open driveway. In doing this project, it was important for the applicant to keep the driveway because that's an area for her two small kids to live and it's a secure area for them to play. So the applicant did not want to touch that. So as a result, in order to add livable space, the more logical space would be to build it above the garage and add a coach house. So with that, if I could call my first witness, Mrs. Belgrau, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Marsilia Belgrau.
And your home address?
1908 North Francisco Avenue.
Subject property consists of a double lot, is that correct?
Yes.
North lot is improved with an existing single-family residence, is that right?
Yes.
While the south lot is improved with a driveway and a two-car garage towards the rear of the lot, is that right?
Yes.
And your plan is to keep the existing single-family residence as well as a driveway, is that right?
Yes.
However, you do plan to demolish the existing two-car garage and construct a new two-car garage as well as adding a coach house on the second level, is that right?
Yes.
In order to do this project, we are seeking a variation to reduce the rear setback, isn't that right?
Yes, yes.
You executed an affidavit which I submitted to the board on your behalf?
Yes.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with that affidavit, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Call my next witness. Mr. Dropso, please state your name and address for the record?
Victor Dropso, licensed architect, 2123 North Damon.
And you are, again, the architect for the subject property, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
As I alluded to, the applicant would like to construct a new two-car garage with a coach house on the second floor, is that correct?
Correct.
And in order to do that project, we are seeking rear setback relief, isn't that right?
Yes.
You executed an affidavit which I submitted to the board on your behalf, is that right?
That is correct.
And if you continued, your testimony would be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it will.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions for our witnesses. We're here to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, 2524Z, 2649 West Evergreen.
It's, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor Augustine, short form.
Thanks again, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Fred Augustine with the Law Office of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 2649 West Evergreen Condominium Association. The applicant, essentially, the property is improved with a residential condominium that has three units. Currently, the condominium has a rear rolling gate. And as it turns out, that rolling gate was established without a building permit. And the current owners right now of the condo unit bought their unit with that rolling gate already established. So nonetheless, the condo association would like to keep that rolling gate and they're here to essentially lawfully establish that gate. So in order to do that, we are seeking variations to reduce the combined side setback from five feet to zero, the west side setback from two feet to zero, as well as the rear setback from the required thirty-seven point five two feet to three point four feet. Here with me this morning, on behalf of the applicant, Santos Gonzalez, as well as our project architect, Victor Dropso. Call my first witness, Mr. Gonzalez, please state your name and address for the record?
Santos Gonzalez, 2649 West Evergreen.
And you are the president of the applicant, which is 2649 West Evergreen Condominium Association, is that correct? Property is currently improved with a three-unit condominium building?
Correct.
And at the rear of the property is an existing rolling gate, is that correct?
Correct.
And just to be clear, when you and your neighbors acquired your respective condominium units, the rolling gate was already established, is that right?
Yes, correct.
So the condominium association would like to lawfully establish the existing rolling gate at the rear, is that right?
That's right.
And in order to establish that gate, you are seeking variations to reduce the side and rear setbacks, is that right?
That's right.
You executed an affidavit which I submitted to the board on your behalf, isn't that right?
That's right.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with your affidavit, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Dropso, please state your name and address for the record again?
Victor Dropso, licensed architect, 2123 North Damon.
Again, you are the architect for the subject property, is that right?
Yes, I am.
Subject property is improved with an existing residential condominium building, is that right?
Correct.
And the applicant is seeking to lawfully establish the existing rolling gate at the rear of the property?
Correct.
And in order to do that, we are seeking variations to reduce the rear setback, is that right?
Yes.
You executed an affidavit which I submitted to the board on your behalf, is that right?
That is correct.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with your affidavit, is that correct?
Yes, it will.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of my witnesses. We're here to answer any questions the board may have.
For the applicant, when did you purchase your unit at the property?
I purchased mine 2017.
Okay.
March of 2017.
Okay. And the gate was already built by that time?
Correct, it was built years before any of the units were purchased, yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next four cases, 2524Z, 25824Z, 25624Z, 25924Z, 2433, 2435, and 2439 West Fargo.
Right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor Fatikas, as much as I want to give you a hard time to show Mr. Soto here some action on his first day, on his first morning, you can proceed with the short form.
This is not normal, come on, sure. Ten twenty-six, if we're wrapping things up. For the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here today on behalf of the co-applicants, FW2433 LLC, FW2435 LLC, and FW2439 LLC. The applicant entities own the subject properties at 2433 through 2439 West Fargo. As you can see from the survey and even just the zoning map, the, it currently consists of two lots that each measure forty-five feet wide. the, it currently consists of two lots that each measure 45 feet wide, and each of those 45 feet wide lots are improved with a three-story, four-unit residential building. Both of the buildings are over 80 years old, and as they were built, it left 30 feet of space between them. So the applicants collectively are proposing to re-divide the two lots into three lots and allow the middle lot, the newly created middle lot, to be developed with a new four-story, four-unit residential building. The existing multi-unit buildings at 2433 and 2439 West Fargo will remain just on 30-foot wide lots. So we're effectively taking what's 90 feet of frontage today and breaking it into three 30-foot wide lots. That 30-foot lot with dimension is typical of many of the properties on this stretch of Fargo and in the immediate area. In order to do that, we are seeking a series of variations. I'm going to do my best to summarize these, and I'm sure the court reporter is not going to be thrilled, but for 2433 West Fargo, we're seeking to reduce the combined side setback total from the required six feet to 3.29 feet. And that allows for an east side setback of 3.26 feet and a west side setback of 0.03 feet. At 2435 West Fargo, we're seeking to reduce the west side setback from the required 2.4 feet to zero, reduce the combined side setback total from six feet to 3.48 feet. Again, a zero west side and a 3.48-foot east side setback. And then reduce the off-street parking requirement for four residential units from four to three, because again, that 30-foot lot can only support three legal parking spaces. And lastly, at 2439 West Fargo, we're seeking to reduce the combined side setback total from the required six feet to 3.47 feet, with an east side setback of 3.47 feet and a zero west side setback. Again, the relief on the outside lots is to preserve existing building conditions on what will become 30-foot wide lots and allow the middle lot to be developed with new construction. With that, I have two witnesses on behalf of all three applicant entities, Mr. James Commons and our project architect, Christopher Bremer. And with that, James, can you please state your name and address for the record?
James Commons, 1400 Patriot, Unit 557, 60025.
And James, you are the managing member of all three applicant entities?
Yes, I am.
And together, those entities own the properties at 2433 through 2439 West Fargo, is that right?
That's correct.
As I stated, we're looking to divide the two 40-foot wide lots into three 30-foot wide lots?
That's right.
And then ultimately develop the newly created middle lot with a new four-story, four-unit residential building, is that right?
That's right.
And you did provide the board with a summary of your projected cost and anticipated return for this application?
Yes, we did.
And it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, that testimony would be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Chris, can you state your name and address for the record?
Christopher Bremer, licensed architect in the state of Illinois. Address is 212 South Marion Street, Oak Park, Illinois.
And Chris, you designed the program for essentially the development of the proposed zoning lot between the two properties, is that right?
That's right.
And it's your professional opinion that the existing building footprints at 2433 and 2439 West Fargo respectively, and the atypical 40-foot wide lot, lot with dimension, create the practical difficulties or hardships to requested variations but overcome, is that right?
That's right.
And given the geometry of the existing buildings and those 30-foot wide lots, we're just two feet short of the width requirement to have a fourth parking space at the rear of the newly created lot, is that right?
Correct.
Even so, four residential units with three parking spaces is a typical ratio on both our side of Fargo, as well as the other side of Fargo for the multi-unit buildings.
It's consistent, yeah.
And it's your opinion that the resulting 30-foot wide lot will also be consistent, compatible with the neighboring lots, is that right?
That's right.
It's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yep.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman, we also did have four of our neighbors offer to come and share their support for the project.
Sure.
I don't want their trip to be...
No, absolutely.
If we could just...
Please.
Have them raise their hands.
Yeah. So if, for everybody who's in support of the applications here, if you would like to stand and be recognized. All right, we do have, we've got four people here. These are, these are the neighbors for the, for the property?
Yes.
On both sides, or?
Two from the adjacent and two immediately behind.
Oh, excellent, excellent. Well, thank you so much for, for showing up today, we appreciate that.
And Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
We're back to page two, case number 22924Z, 3051 West Irving Park Road.
Forgot, we have one more opportunity for fireworks this morning. Okay, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Very much. The board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 22824S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor in a new four-story, three-dwelling unit building with a detached three-car garage, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated June 6, 2024, prepared by Edward Livanu. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Kupiak, I represent the applicant. And I have with me today, I've got Anthony DeSaro seated beside me on behalf of, well, he is the applicant, okay? And I have Una R. on behalf of the architect's firm that did the plans, and of course, Mr. Ryan, our expert witness. And we've got two cases, one building, but two cases. And it's a vacant lot, and the proposal is to build a new building, a three-unit residential building. And the special use would allow us to do the residential unit on the ground floor. The second case, because this is a residential building, a number of buildings on Irving have attached garages and built lot line to lot line. This particular building, because it's a residential building, has a detached garage, and there's some open space in between the building and the garage. And because the garage is detached, the code provision does have a maximum square footage for an accessory building, like a detached garage. We don't, we don't exceed it by much. Actually, the original, original denial spelled out, we're actually only 45 feet over the maximum, which is 9.6%. And to be honest, it's a 20, kind of a technical provision. It's a 20-foot garage. Probably the unique feature is it's a 26-foot lot, so this garage is a little bit, little bit wider because of the 26-foot, 26-foot wide lot. But it's a three-unit building, needs a three-car garage, and this is a three-car garage. So with that, first witness, Anthony. Into the microphone, Anthony, state your name and your business address.
Hi, I'm Anthony DeSaro, Chi City Real Estate, 3029 North Kimball Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, 60618.
And Anthony, you have a contract to purchase subject property?
Yes.
And the proposal is to build a new four-story, three-unit residential building on this property?
Yes.
And your plan is a condominium project? You plan to sell these units?
Yes.
And you're asking for a special use so as not to do a commercial on the ground floor, but instead to allow a residential unit below the second floor?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to the garage, Anthony, this is a condominium project, so you need a three-car garage with three enclosed parking spaces?
Yes.
And did your architect advise you that you need this variation to build an adequate three-car garage on this lot?
Yes.
You're asking for that variation also?
Yes.
Did you sign, did I prepare? And did you sign an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
Yes.
If I continue to quiz you, would your answers be consistent with this affidavit?
Yes.
That's all I have of Anthony. Next, I'm going to call our architect, Una. Would you please state your full name and your business address?
My name is Wana Hergela-June, and my business address is 20 North Parks with 3300, Chicago, Illinois, 60602.
Good. And Una, in connection with the special use, is it true that your design for this building will make the building compatible with other buildings on the street?
Yes.
And with respect to that second case with the variation, based on your work and research, the variation is necessary to build an adequate three-car garage for this project?
That's right.
And this lot is 26 feet wide?
Yes.
So the garage is a little bit wider than normal?
Yes, that's correct.
But only 20 feet deep?
That's right.
So visually, looks the same as any other new three-car garage?
Right.
Thank you. Una, is it true that we had prepared and you had signed an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
Yes.
And if I continue to quiz you, would your answers be consistent with this affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Joe Ryan, name and address?
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI, President, LaSalle Appraisal Group with offices at 9455 South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And Joe, you did a report in connection with your testimony here today?
Did.
And we submitted that report on your behalf. Joe, is it true that this special use meets all the criteria of the ordinance?
It does.
Also true, this special use will not have an adverse effect on surrounding property or the community?
No, and it will not add any more vacant, vacant retail space on the first floor.
Okay, very good. And if I continue to quiz you, your answers would be consistent with what you have in that report?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and that does it for the morning cases. So I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to Section 2C4 of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we are in closed session.
It's typically something he couldn't buy for himself. If I were a little kid's suit, I just found him, and here you go. It's on my sneaker game, it's pretty, pretty great. It is crazy. I've gotten to the point where I'm cold.
All right, I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. First, I move to approve all continuance requests to the dates stated by me. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 22124S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 22424Z, 22524Z, and 22624Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 22724Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 22824S and 22924Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 23024S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 23124S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 23224S, 23324Z. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 23224S, 23324Z, and 23424Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 23524S and 23624Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 24124S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 24224Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito? Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 24324Z and 24424Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 24524Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 24624Z and 24724Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 24824Z, 24924Z, 25024Z, 25124Z, 25224Z, and 25324Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 25424Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito? Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 25524Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 25624Z, 25724Z, 25824Z, and 25924Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move that we recess until 2:00 PM. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, we are in recess until 2:00 PM today, thank you.